Good evening and welcome to the Joint Planning Commission and Design Review Commission's meeting to discuss updating signage and regulations on January 30, 2025. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Kwak?
Here.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp? Commissioner Rice or is absent. Commissioner Nating?
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson is absent. Chair Shongman?
Here.
I believe Chair Chase Case is absent. Vice Chair Newsom?
Here.
Commissioner Bastin?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Thank you. And it's my understanding we do not have a consent calendar?
Correct.
Thank you. And we'll move on to public communications for the opportunity any member of the public, which should just discuss any item that's not on the agenda, is welcome to approach us and talk to us. Seeing nobody racing towards the podium, we will close public comments and move on to our public hearing. And I believe we'll start out with a staff presentation.
Thank you very much. I'm Erica Van Inbrand, Community Development Director, and I'm also serving as the project manager for this project. We have our consultant, Mintier Harnish, which I'll introduce in just a second, but I just wanted to give you a little overview and so forth of the project. I'm sure that you've all experienced, you know, throughout the time that you've been on your respective commissions, questions around signage, why it is the way it is, and trying to make sense and also provide guidance to people as signage is coming in. It's our intention to be able to use this process, and it's a process, but also an outcome, to ultimately have a sign, set of sign regulations that are congruent with what modern day signage requirement, you know, might be, and for its usage for a variety of needs, but also to have it be congruent with the, you know, the city's needs at once. And when I say the city, I don't mean the city organization, I mean the community. And so with that, I will turn it over to my colleagues here, our consultants from Mintier Harnish, who will introduce themselves and then start going through the presentation. So thank you.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here and thanks for allowing us to talk at you for the next couple of minutes. My name is Michael Gibbons. I am a project manager with Mintier Harnish, the consulting team that was selected to assist the city in this project. Along with me is Nikki Zanchetta. Nikki is a planner in our office and is the project planner on this project. And then in the back of the room is Brent Gibbons. Brent is a principal planner at our firm and is, will act as the project director, perform QA QC on the project. Tonight is going to be facilitated as a study session. So we'll start with just a brief presentation and then we'll really open it up for discussion. That's kind of the real intent of this evening. The goal of this evening is to not only provide you an update on this project, how you can participate, what you can expect from us, but it's also to bring you up to speed on sign regulations. It's not every day that commissioners are dealing with signs, and there has been some legal, legal changes into what we can and cannot regulate. So hope to provide you a crash course, if you will, on sign regulations as well. So I'll start with just a brief introduction and overview of how we got here. Really, this project started in 2019 with the following goals. Clarify the intent of the city's existing sign regulations and the role that the city plays in regulating it. Update the city's sign standards, so the actual regulations, and then also update with that the city's design guidelines for signs. So we have this guiding document that we're updating in addition to the actual standards. And really, the purpose of the overall update is to create, as Erica said, a contemporary, contemporary code that addresses new technologies, problem areas, efficiencies, and overall just create a new sign regulations that address local needs. As mentioned, this project started actually in 2019. We are no longer in 2019, but we did a lot of work before this project was put on pause due to COVID. So we started up this project initially with some stakeholder interviews. Those consisted of industry leaders. I believe we had some commissioners on there at that point as well. And we had a series of questions that we led. We actually facilitated those stakeholder interviews in this room in 2019. We summarized that feedback. We developed a working group similar to what we will be developing again for this project, and actually had come up with a, what we call a fix-it list, which is really just a checklist to-do item of all of the changes that the city was hoping to incorporate when we initially kicked off this, initially kicked off this meeting. We provided that feedback then to city council, and then the project was unfortunately put on pause for quite some time. We fortunately restarted this project back in last year with a kickoff meeting with Erica and her team where we went over the objectives. We looked at what the scope of the project would be today and adjusted that to really what the city is hoping to get out of this project in 2025, being that there are some desires that have changed since 2019. There is a new commission. We have a new council. We have a new design review commission as well. So getting your temperature as to what you would like to see in these updates and how we can craft them so it meets your expectations as we're on the road now. Currently, we are at the start of this project. We're technically in the project initiation phase where we are, this is our first time meeting with you. This is our first time to get feedback as to what your, again, what your expectations are for this code. And what we hope to do is receive your input tonight, and that will ultimately kind of guide us as to the next steps and what we do next, how involved we make the, these changes. You know, are there certain areas or hot topic items that you would like us to, to address? So that is an overview of the project. As mentioned, a large portion of this evening is to really also bring you up to speed on sign regulations, almost a crash course. So I'm going to hand it to Nikki to lead that portion of our presentation. We'll then end with, I'll end with an overview of what are the project objectives today in this new project restart, and then open it up to a discussion with both bodies.
Great. So as Michael mentioned, this is just going to be a little bit of a crash course for signs and sign regulations. I think we're all pretty familiar with signs. We see them in our everyday life, but we're going to go over just what, and when we're going through these regulations, how to kind of think about signs and what to keep in mind. So we'll go over just what we are mean when we were saying signs, the legal framework for sign regulations, and some of the do's and don'ts and best practices of sign regulations. So what is a sign? Really, it can be anything that is meant to provide identification, description, illustration of, that's a communication of something, whether that be commercial or non-commercial, and is meant for the general public and directing them in some way, shape, or form for a product, service, or place. And signs can be temporary or permanent and used, again, for either commercial or non-commercial purposes. And signs serve a lot of purposes. They can be, we see them in our everyday life, and even when we don't think of something as signs, a lot of times we, this whole project is really kind of diving deep into the different signs that we, we see on a regular basis and how we want those to look in the community. So signs can be, help people with finding places and locations, whether that be for wayfinding or providing directions of when, of street signs or road identification, even property addresses or a form of signs and ways to identify neighborhoods or landmarks within the community. And overall, typically, signs are, are meant to convey some type of information, whether that be for regulatory purposes, like a no parking sign, or warnings for hazards or safety reasons, and then also just informational or descriptive signs to, to provide information to the community. And we also use signs to support safe travel for pedestrians, cyclists, public transit, and for vehicles. So those can be safety signs or, again, wayfinding signs. And they also help promote economic development. So that is going to be, especially in business districts, and any business has a sign to let you know where the business is, and any kind of monument sign like you see in this top picture, that shows the businesses that are within a shopping center. So they are very, very important for, for businesses and economic development. So getting into a little bit of the, the legal framework for sign regulations. So signs are a form of speech that are protected under the First Amendment, and that, what that really means, especially at the local level, is that signs can't be regulated based on the content or subject matter, or any ideas conveyed on the sign. And that's going to be a really important thing to keep in mind while we go through how we're going to regulate signs, that we're not regulating content, but we're mostly regulating the, the presence of the sign. And there's a few of the things, there are a few exceptions that are commonly accepted for, for signage is, that's not protected under the First Amendment, which is any obscenity, anything that's inciting violence or illegal activity, or anything that could pose a safety risk of resembling a traffic safety sign. And so there are a couple different types of speech. They're both protected under the First Amendment, but might be treated a little bit differently depending on the situation. There's commercial and non-commercial speech. Commercial speech is really anything related to the sale of something. And the, the biggest thing that's different from any non-commercial speech is that really it can't be misleading, inaccurate, or relating to illegal activity. Non-commercial speech, that's really anything else. So that can be reflecting any personal, political, or religious views, and any personal signage on, a lot of times on personal property as well. And that's really highly protected under the First Amendment and is something to make sure we keep in mind as we go through creating sign regulations. So what does that leave the local authority is to be able to regulate? So local jurisdictions do have the power to regulate signs, and that the main goals of that at the local level is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents and businesses, and controlling community aesthetics. So a lot of times that's common in maybe a business district or historical district where you want the signs to look a certain way, to maintain that, that architectural style, and then just removing clutter, whether that be visual or physical clutter within the community. So sign regulate, the way we go about creating sign regulations that aren't infringing on the, on freedom of speech is really avoiding content-based regulations. So one way of looking at sign regulations to make sure that they're not content-based, typically, if it is content-based, an individual would have to read the sign in order to know how the regulation applies. So if you have to read the sign to know whether or not that regulation is going to affect where that sign is, that's probably a content-based regulation that needs to be readjusted. Also, the purpose of the sign regulation is to regulate certain subject matters specifically. If a subject matter is called out in the regulation, it's most likely a content-based regulation that would be infringing on freedom of speech. So here are a few examples of content-based regulations. These are very, very general, but a lot of times, as you can see, for like this first one, that churches and schools could have wayfinding signs at intersections to direct students or parents to a certain area of the property, however, not allowing those same types of signs for any other type of use, whether that's for an event or for another business or something like that. That would be a regulation where a certain use is being regulated differently for using types of signage than others, and that would be considered a content-based regulation. I won't go through all of these, but these are just a few examples of where it calls out either certain zoning districts and certain types of uses on that property are regulated differently when it comes to signage than others. So the best way to go about sign regulations is to avoid that, to avoid the content-based regulations and keep it content neutral. And there's really three elements that you focus on for local sign regulations, which is location, time, or duration, and appearance and design. So for location, this would be regardless of what content is on the sign, restricting where certain types of signs may be allowed. So whether A-frame signs are allowed, or freestanding, or if they have to be mounted. So that's not regulating the, what's on the sign, or who can put up a sign, but just where it's located. Also, where it's located on a building can be considered content neutral and also restricting the locations of signs by property type, which would be more of, you know, on a residential property, any sign, regardless of what the sign is, can only be located on certain portions of the property. Time or duration would just be restricting how long temporary signs can be displayed, again, regardless of content, or the times of day that signs can be on display, especially for lighted signs. That might cause some kind of nuisance, but again, not depending on, dependent on the type of sign, not based on what's on the sign. And then appearance and design, this is, I think, where a lot of sign regulations start to come into play. This is really regulating the height of signs, how many signs are, are posted, whether they are lighted or have any movement, the colors, the fonts, the size of the lettering. Again, these are, these aren't content-based, these are really just the, how the sign looks and feels in whatever community or neighborhood or the street it's on and who it's serving, not based on the content of the sign. So that's just a kind of a very quick overview of things to keep in mind as we go about this project and thinking about sign regulations to make sure that we're, we are regulating what we can and, but aren't infringing on any First Amendment rights and don't end up in any, any sticky situations in that, in that regard. So I'll pass it back to Michael to go over the project approach from here on out.
Thank you, Nikki. Yes, we want to avoid sticky situations. So, and that's actually probably built into our approach. But in, in, with this project restart, here at least initially are our project objectives, what we've been working with your staff to refine, and there's really five. And what would be great in our conversations this evening is, are there more? Are we missing anything here? But first and foremost, what we've heard and what we've been tasked with doing is creating clearer and more flexible standards that can allow for innovative design, while still allowing some sort of control locally, or some certainty in how you, how you know your designs, your signs will look. Another objective here is to reflect contemporary trends, so shopping trends, emerging technologies, so electronic reader boards or big touchscreen boards. How are we addressing those? How are we incorporating them and regulating them? We also having changes in shopping behaviors, behaviors, and preferences in advertising that we see companies doing. We see kind of innovative, newer logos where we're dropping text and it's just a logo, and how are we addressing that? Is that a sign? How is that taken into consideration? So this is really what our, our core objectives are, and our approach is, is this. We, we are still going to be conducting and putting together a focus group for this project that, at least as of now, Erica can correct me, will be a member of the DRC and then a member of the Planning Commission. And they, those individuals will be our working group. Those will, those individuals will see working drafts, initial drafts, provide us initial feedback, and really almost act as the kind of reporting body back to the various commissions as to how the project is going. We also plan on conducting some online engagement for this project, specifically targeted at the business and the development community. We'll do that via an online questionnaire. It'll be interactive, really honing in on what is the, like, what's acceptable for, for regulations? What are new trends? What are, what are developers and business, the business community seeing that are deficiencies that we can address? We also have a electronic engagement, so we'll have a website that's going to be hosted on the city's actual website. We'll have our own webpage for this project. That will be a hub for this project moving forward. So we'll have all of the draft documents that come out for public review there. There will be an ability for people to sign up for our email list, which we will also be having as well as part of this outreach, in which we'll send some periodic emails out through the city's listserv and, and email service provider. And then we'll have some occasional update meetings with, with, with both of you, so the DRC and the PC. These will be more kind of informal updates by, by planning staff as to just bringing you up to speed on, on where we're at. So that is really our, our project approach. As mentioned, tonight is, is really the opportunity for us to solicit feedback from you, see if this approach is in line with your expectations, if there are any fix-it list items that you have that you want us to know about, now would be that opportunity. So I'll hand it back to the chair.
Chair, if I may also add that, you know, a real key in this is to make it easier for everyone, so make it easier for the business community, to make it easier for staff to help assist, and to make it easier for you too, so that the answer is back to those going through having signs or not know, or it depends, but rather, you know, clarity about that so there's less ambiguity, but there's also the room for creativity.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. We'll start out with questions for the presenters. I'll start out with the Designer Review, who, any questions?
I'll, I'll save one.
You know, when we were talking about the council objectives going forward, one of the big objectives they have is diversity, equity, and inclusion.
And how does that play in to this work? Because I mean, I think, thing that comes to mind, number one, is obviously when you're doing businesses and so forth, they can do whatever they want, but, but like if you're doing any kind of wayfinding signs or those, are there other languages? Do you use pictograms? What strategies do you use?
So, yeah, I think you're honing into the accessibility of the document. So these regulations will be codified using your, your ecodifier. So I believe, I can't remember if you use e-code or is it muni-code? But there is the ability in those online platforms, or at least there should be, to translate languages. So that should be something that's built into your municipal code already, I believe.
What about the built, the built environment? So I mean, if you're, it sounds like the scope of this is, I mean, I was coming in here thinking this was maybe just commercial signs, but really you're talking about everything. So if you go into a public building and, and there is wayfinding, how do you ensure that it, that you're speaking to, to everyone, inclusive to people of different needs and so forth? I mean, I'm an architect, I get this question all the time, so sorry to throw it at you, but that's a common question I get.
Yeah, I mean, so a lot of those items, I think you'll, then you'll know are building code-related items, so ADA. So we will not be touching those items, how you will get around inside of the building. We're, we're really looking at is, is the exterior, the, the ad, really the, the signs on the outside of your buildings, your pylons, your directory signage, plaques that are on potentially personal homes, really anything inside, the function of the building will, will, will be relieved to the, to the building code. So we won't be kind of touching on those. Now, can we incorporate some design standards? Certainly. Right?
Man, I think, I'm not telling you how to do your job. I'm just telling, this is a question that will be asked more than once. So just look at it in that, in that lens.
Sure.
Where it's appropriate. I mean, you're not going to do on-house signs, or you're not going to tell businesses what they have to do, but in the public realm, this, this is going to come up, I think, and it's, it's an emerging question that we all have to ask. I mean, it's one of the objectives of, of the city council that I, I heard that they're talking about.
So if I may, I'm taking your question slash feedback and input, and that more is feedback and input, that, you know, there should be an element or dimension that's included in the body of work that's done here to acknowledge that that is a facet or a characteristic that you're interested in.
And so is it, and from what I'm understanding is that it's kind of when and where would it be required to have different languages on signs and things like that, and to what extent?
I mean, it's, it's a question I get, I, I do public buildings, so it's a question I get all the time, and I just know sooner or later it's going to be asked of you, so just start thinking about it.
I can chime in here. Brent Gibbons, Principal Planner, Mintier Harnish. There are other communities that we worked in across the Bay Area that start to bring in other languages that represent the city in which they're located into public signage, wayfinding signage. I can think of a few on the peninsula. And so there are opportunities where we can make signage more accessible via language on them, and we can definitely take a look into how that could be applied here for other wayfinding and accessibility techniques.
It's a question to ask.
And I think it's, I, I think it's important because we do live in a diversifying environment, and we want to make sure that policies are inclusive of everybody within the community.
The other, the other kind of big, you talked about trends. That's really important. You know, there's things like, now they're lighting whole buildings like Salesforce Tower. You can, a whole building can become signage. Lastly, durability. So many, so many signs, particularly in the public realm, are just not designed well enough to last. I'm doing a project at Foothill College right now where everything has to be replaced. It's less than 10 years old. Doing a sign project, everything is faded. So you have to follow that lens and somehow find a way to make things more durable.
And what kind of signage are you seeing at that facility?
I mean, that's a college, right? So, so we're, it's in the public realm. They have a lot more wayfinding, and I mean, and I think you said that there's not a lot of wayfinding that you do, but as you approach public buildings, and really any, anything where you're walking up and you're, you're seeking to get, any, in a, in the public realm, outside buildings, wherever you, you need to be able to see the sign, so many times those signs fade, and you just, you lose all the information on the sign. So some care has to be put to that when you, when you create standards for people to use for design.
Thank you. Who else would have questions or comments? I guess we could do comments at the same time. Okay.
I do have a couple of questions to kind of understand a little bit better what, where the extent or the scope of the project would be. And so I think I saw a flyer either by email or on social media about the city seeking input about the signage, and was looking at the different pictures that were put on that flyer as examples of what the project would be looking at. And one of the signs that I saw, but I think was like the street names, like North Main Street or Agnesio Valley, the ones that are kind of stuck on the traffic lights. And so my initial impression of the scope going into this meeting was that it was just going to be sign- going to be signs that are more not related to drivers or to, it's more towards businesses and to things that are not tied to the street, if you will. And so I was wondering, I wanted clarification, will the scope also include, in the sense of community aesthetic, will it include the, the appearance of the signs on the streets?
So qualified, maybe. And the qualified maybe is that, you know, in terms of standard street signage, you know, Main Street, et cetera, usually, you know, there are some standards that are put in place, you know, for traffic safety and so on, and this project really isn't meant to try and reinvent and reimagine that. But there is also signage that, in the downtown, as an example, that are more wayfinding oriented, or there's also talk in, you know, various places about wayfinding, like in the Shadelands and some other places, where it would be helpful to have some guidance on how that occurs. So that's where the qualified yes is, and so it's not necessarily here the city's, you know, traffic, you know, what's going by traffic lights, et cetera, but if there's other elements of wayfinding signage to be able to, whether it's to help a driver or walker, bicyclist, and so on, that, those would be helpful because it's not just us, the city, but it's also, you know, many campus environments, and that we could help support those efforts, if that makes sense?
Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Elsewhere? Yes?
So, hi, thank you for coming and updating us on this fascinating topic. I do recall approval process we had to go through earlier this year of signage for commercial building that I think both went to design review and came to us. And I think it, there was an education process for me about what businesses are looking for in terms of their interest in articulating who they are and drawing people to them and having it be really a part of their value proposition for the property. So I hope that that sort of emerging world of what the businesses want, because we want to be business friendly, we want to attract them here to Walnut Creek, is included in the project, so, does that make sense?
It does, and it is.
Thank you. Anyone else right now? I'll jump in with my suggestions. I was thinking about it all day, of different new signs that I've seen, and the Wall Street Journal had a article today about businesses or corporations basically rebranding apartment complexes to, say, Fiat instead of whatever, so as that's projecting out there to, this is the Fiat building. And that was one which might need to cover a little bit, is do, do we allow that to happen as much or not? There's also, if you look in places like Shanghai and, I believe, Hong Kong, the skyscrapers become at night entire ad, running ads systems. And there's a little salon on Locust Street that at night projects down on the sidewalk, they're basically name, kind of a slide, I'm not sure what they, how they do it, which is different things.
I'm not sure.
Yes, the Lesher Garage. And that's my comments right now, so. Are you getting the information you want from us right now, or do we need to keep talking?
This is the opportunity for you to provide us with anything, any guidance, any insights that you want us to explore as part of this project, because ultimately signage comes before one or both of you, and sometimes before council. And so just wanted to make sure that we're capturing all views and perspectives, and to your earlier point, you know, we're going to be having similar conversations with the business community and then the community writ large.
One question I have is, could we have different standards for different parts of the city? Obviously downtown would be one standard, but maybe out in the more residential, usually residential areas have a different set of standards. Is that conceivable or desirable?
It can certainly be done, a lot of sign regulations will tie back to a zone, so that could certainly be done, where we group certain residential zones together and apply specific sign standards per, for those zones.
Okay.
I got a few more things, since we're just, did I interrupt you? I think the community input's really important. I think, I've been on the Sign Subcommittee for, I've been on the Design Review Commission for two and a half years or whatever, and I've been doing the Sign Subcommittee for, and there's a lot of hot buttons. I think it's good, the survey is good, that's really important. I think you're going to want to do specific outreach to like the Downtown Business Association and Better Business Bureau, because they show up at our meetings advocating for businesses, and there's kind of common themes that we see about the standard. The standard, as you know, is really old. I mean, I think the things that we're seeing now are like, people want, will want a pictogram on the building, like Chick-fil-A. Well, how do you regulate that? I mean, not, not to, not to mention anything, but we know exactly, right? Yeah. Okay, lettering heights, okay, how do you measure a letter when it's going like this? And, and, okay, if all the letters, if it's an eight-inch standard, and they want to have one 12-inch letter, what do you do there? It would be really good to go read some of the variances that are requested, because it's like a common theme, what they call skyline signs, signs on the top of building, buildings, people do not like those. Area, it seems like our, the amount of area that we allow on sides of buildings is, is out of date, right? And, and number of frontages is a common ask, and some of the things people are asking for are pretty reasonable. Of course, if you go ask, if you go have a retail business, they're going to want a sign everywhere, and we can't allow that, but, but it is good to go look and see what people are asking for and decide, okay, well, maybe we can do a dialed-back version of Also, the other thing that, that came up, blade signs. I mean, there's no, there's no real provision for blade signs, but they're asked for again and again, so it'd be good to develop a standard for that. That's what I got.
What's a blade sign?
A blade sign is, you know, when you're walking down the street, there's signs that hang out and project off, so as you walk down the street in Walnut Creek, you won't see too many of them because they're not allowed. But if you go to other cities, as you walk down the sidewalks, they, they have signs that are hanging out, smaller signs that say, oh, here's where the coffee shop is. We're all familiar with the signs, we just don't have them here in town because they're not allowed. Sometimes there's been specific exceptions, but they're actually pretty good on streets like this that are narrow, because you can't really walk away from the building and see them, they're, everything's very tight, so, so it's a nice thing to have, but it's also if you can have them, you have to regulate them, right?
Thank you. Yes?
Speaking of, when you guys were talking about zoning, sorry, different zones for the signs, it's not, it's very similar to way development regulations or form-based code zone is, it's about what zone you're in, and each zone has specific density, and so I think that would be good in order, when we were looking at the signs for the commercial, a lot of the things that we had discussed was adjacency requirements, which is very, very typical when you're talking about form-based code zones or development regulations, which are the objective standards. And so seeing where that sign is in comparison to what is the zoning or the land uses adjacent to that sign, right? And so that's where, when we were looking at that building, we're saying, okay, if it's here, what's around it? Is it single-family, multifamily, height restriction? And so I think getting, being able to have sign regulations that juxtap, that has a juxtaposition of the different land uses that are allowed. The other thing that we also talked about was lighting, and for that particular project, there was one light that faced a commercial street, and again, the other one had the adjacency to the single-family residential. And so there's many cities, for example, that say, hey, the maximum is 2,700 Kelvin, which is like a warm, inviting light, because of the adjacency. And so, but you wouldn't put that, you wouldn't want something so dim where you're in a more robust, there, there seems to be something where the city has this, this great place where you have activation, and again, those development regulations about the stoop has to be like this, or, you know, the, the setback, it's because there's areas where you want to activate, and there's areas where you want to subdue a little bit. And so I think to your point, actually everyone's point, if we could take it by zones, think about adjacency, think about the land use, and we tie, we almost tie it to our own land use, how we break it up. So it's very objective versus being subjective, and that could be lighting, the, the size, to your point, right? Like where, if you're facing, it could be the same building, if you're facing this particular zoning, or if you're fa, if the back is facing this zoning, because that's, that's what a downtown is. The other thing that kind of came to mind is there's a different look and feel also that Walnut Creek has, and it's beautiful for this, where you are in a residential zone, and then there's like quaint little areas that feel, Broadway has a very specific feeling, and you, you get that feeling as you're walking through that whole area. And then you kind of work, walk through the older part of downtown, where you have the Creighton Barrel and Inverna has a different, another different feeling. I don't know if that branding that the city did, if it happened naturally, happenstance, or if it was something that was very intentional, but I think that that would be something good, if there can be some intention about you're walking into a certain area, and I agree with Commissioner Newsom also about longevity of the signs and not having to continue to replace them, because the last thing we would ever want to do is have these poor owners replace signs, which are actually quite expensive. So the materials is, is worth it if it's going to be there for a long time. And then the last thing, and then I'll stop talking, is there, there seems to be great places where signs are more, more earthy materials in the sense of like no electronics behind it, and there's a great other, there's other places where you do want to have that, you, in your presentation, you talked about technology, you know, and about Shanghai, how things light up. And so I think there, there could also be a time and a place where you have the lights that are touch or, you know, I'm just kind of thinking about the art that is all around Walnut Creek, and there's some of the art that you can touch and feel, and others are signs like, don't touch the big head. And so if there could be that incorporation of this sign is meant, you're not going to have just a regular old, like I think about my three-year-old, like where she wants to touch something, I'm like, don't touch it! You know, so if there could be some places where the sign is meant to be touched, it's meant to activate that community, because we have, I remember you were talking about how you do wayfinding for art, you know? And so I think that would be pretty awesome if we could have that sign incorporate some of that activation where it could, and then, and the other places where it's just that grandeur of a stone, a marble, a metal, whatever that may be, so.
One, one quick thing, so there's a building that came before us about a year ago, Mendocino Farms, it's down on Agnesio. And they branded the whole building. So where do you draw the line about what a sign is? I mean, they basically, if you look at it, if you look at it, it's all patterned. And when it came before us, it was like, I was thinking, that's pretty clever, because the whole building is identity, but where do you draw the line on that? And so sometimes they'll have signs, the letters will be right, but then they'll actually have expanded areas of paint. So really, looking at where that edge is, I don't know if that makes any sense, but...
Along with those, they used to back in the early part of last century, have the entire building look like a shoe or something like that, or an orange, or something, various other strange things. One question I have, is something we need to consider, is assuming we go through this process and we approve this all-new system, what happens to all of those older businesses that may want to replace their signs? Will they have to, is there a process they have to go through, or a permitting process, or they just be able to, as long as they conform to the new pattern?
Don't know yet, and that'll be part of the discussion.
Okay.
I have just, I just have one sort of basic question, is the purpose, and maybe everyone else is clear on this, but is the purpose to completely rewrite what we currently have as our sign regulations? Or are we updating them?
So from my standpoint, it is trying to first look at what is desired, so what's the outcome that's desired? And if it requires rewriting it, then yes. If it's a tweak that, you know, essentially saying, okay, 80% is good, and then here, let's deal with this 20%, but to be able to answer that question definitively at this point is going to depend on what the feedback we get from the business community, the feedback we get from you, the feedback we get from the community overall, and to see where those, where that interest and that feedback overlaps with our existing regulations. And if, as, you know, Council, as Commissioner Newsom had mentioned, that there are many exceptions to those rules, and if the exceptions are so many that the rules make sense to, for clarity on purpose, to rewrite, you know, the majority of things, then the recommendation would be to go there.
Okay, because I, it seems that in my short time on the Design Review Commission, many of the things that we look at are making exceptions for these types of things, like it just, it's a commonplace thing, so I think it would be good to address that, that suggestion.
Other comments, questions?
So, I had additional comments that came to mind while I was listening to the remarks of my fellow commissioners here. One was, I think it would be important to consider, as somebody who travels around the Bay a lot, and I'm often visiting different cities because my family is around the Bay, I often, I think it's important to consider how the associations that come with certain types of signs. So for example, we have a mall in the South Bay called Valley Fair, it's a very large mall, and some of the signs that I see there are like electronic interactive directories to help find stores. And I was walking through downtown Walnut Creek the other day to go shopping, and I realized that the signs in downtown Walnut Creek are like, they're stationary, I think, paperback signs. And so if we were to update those signs to like electronic interactive directories, would that give the downtown area a more commercial shopping feel that might kind of lose the charm that the downtown currently has? So I think that what are other cities doing to create a certain impression on visitors to the city? Or is the, even if they visit certain neighborhoods or, or commercial districts, how do the signs help to reinforce the overall impression based on where those visitors are from and what they know from the signs in their local cities? I think it's kind of the general impression, reinforcing the impression as we travel around the Bay.
Along with that, I think we need to come to agreement on the aesthetic, what is Walnut Creek supposed to look like in general? If we could wander in, it goes with his comments, because we don't want to look like necessarily downtown San Jose, or San Francisco for that matter.
It's an easy thing, I always use Las Vegas as the alternate example.
Really? I thought I did, I'm sorry, I wanted to... I'm sorry, I wanted to bring up your concept of zones and addressing what you said, which is the different characters and the different places in Walnut Creek, and being mindful of that. And I also wanted us to be mindful of something that Erica presented to us when she came to us, which is the council's request and requirements for this project, which includes the equity and diversity piece, but some other pieces also. So I just want to make sure that as we move forward, we encompass both of those concepts, because Walnut Creek does have a really distinct personality in different places within it. And some places like Shade Lands are completely different than downtown and deserve different treatment. Thanks.
Question, other comments?
If I may add just one point to that. I think one of the benefits of this particular project is that we're addressing, we're addressing two tools. We have like your actual design standards, how tall something can be, what's the area, how many signs per... And then we're also looking at the design guidelines. And when we're doing guidelines, we can be a little bit more subjective in the way of what we're suggesting and what we're recommending, unlike the design standards are. So we do have that ability to look at potentially different areas of the jurisdiction and specify different design standards or the intent via those guidelines, if that's something that also interests the city.
Other questions, comments? Are we running out of comments?
I think we all agree.
I think we all agree we're running out of comments. Therefore, should we turn it over to our secretary? What would you like to do now?
This is a study session, so a motion and a vote is not needed. So if this is the, if this is all the comments that you need, want to provide to staff, then I mean, we can move forward with the agenda items.
You do have one quasi-actiony item, which is the volunteer voluntold.
So we're actually, if we conclude our discussion, we need to find sacrificial lambs from both commissions. If nobody, I'll stick my neck out and say I'm willing to do it unless somebody else would like to do it.
What is the expected time commitment for the working group?
So, don't know entirely right now, but I'm going to use as a benchmark our apex projects of their commitment, we have asked of staff internally for a variety of projects. And basically, you know, it's looking at like maybe, you know, eight to 12 hours a month at most, and some of that may be homework. But that is on the most rigorous end, I would say. And then we're going to be doing our level best to make it a lot easier to be less than that. But I don't want to, you know, set unrealistic expectations, oh, you've got half an hour and then it's more. So it's better to do it the other way.
Are the meetings in the evening? Are they during the day?
It is the preference of the volunteers.
Are you interested?
Are there meetings?
So there'll be some level of meetings, and I think that, you know, we have been meeting with each other virtually and so forth, so that, you know, it's, for those who volunteer, we will, we will come, you know, do it your way to help support you in helping support us. So it's more of a, you tell us how you'd like to do this, and we will help support you.
It's more like, kind of like the Designer View Standards, that type of...
That is a process that you're very familiar with, so I'd say yes.
I mean, I'll do it unless one of you wants to do it. Okay.
I'm happy to volunteer. Put my name out there. I think it would be an interesting project for me, especially as one of the newer commissioners, to really get in depth, get my hands on what we do as commissioners, and to really kind of learn this side of the city and think about it long-term as a relatively young resident of the city as well.
Also comes that motion, no.
And I've been on the opposite side, where I've had to place applications, so on behalf of the design community, I'm enthusiastic about it.
As the project manager, I'm deeply grateful for the volunteers. I will do my best to make it fun for you, along with the consultant, and then to make it productive and painless.
Okay, with that in mind, I have... Anything else we need to do? And any commissioner's staff reports or considerations?
None at this time.
In that case, we're adjourned, and thank you all for coming, and thank you for a great presentation. Looking forward to see the results.